Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Campbell. I'm the Chair of the Hanson Planning Board. I'm going to call it an order, the October 23rd, 2023, meeting of the Town Hanson Planning Board at the hour of 6:30 PM. I'd like to also announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on the Women Hanson Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at whhca.tv. Tonight, we have present four board members, Mr. Benandato, Mr. Ellis, myself, and Mr. Coet, as well as the administrative assistant and our town planner, Mr. DeFrase. We are meeting on the second floor of the Meeting Room A, Town Hall, 542 Livery Street, in the Town of Hanson. With the call of order complete, the first item of business is our public hearing, continue public hearing, 6:30 PM, update on the proposed MBTA zoning district and a draft of related zoning amendments as required under Section 3A of the Zoning Act. The Town of Hanson is a commuter rail community, and as such, must have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multi-family housing is permitted by right. Town Planner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I met with VHB. They are the consultants that we'll be working with through the grant process with the Mass Housing Partnership. And I met with two members of their staff last Friday, Lucas, Luke Mitchell, and Krista, I'm trying to pronounce her name correctly, Magaha. They came in, we met at 9 o'clock here in this room. They provided, item one in your packet is basically a set of slides that they provided as part of the meeting to discuss sort of the process that they're going to be going through in getting us over the line through the town meeting in June of 2024. Hopefully, we'll have everything squared away and drafted as far as the regulations are concerned. We'll have approvals of what we'll call preliminary approval from the Commonwealth. And then what we did is, the three of us took a ride down along the main street area and along High Street and Philip Street, so they could see the area that we're sort of talking about. They are proposing to do some drone, say, drone footage, drone survey of the area. So they're going to be putting together in sort of in the narrative in their slides, you know, information, slides, helping with the public outreach. So the next time I'm going to be meeting with them will be in November, on the 6th of November. We're going to have a Zoom call, and they're going to let me know about their progress and what they've been up to. So we're moving forward with the process. So the process is moving forward, and I'll just continue to keep the board updated as we keep moving along. The next thing we're working on, as I've said before, I just have not had an opportunity to get into it, is the, we'll call it draft bylaws that are based on the template provided by the Commonwealth. VHB will be helping with that. There is one page in that packet of slides that I saw that said something along the lines of like, as far as zoning for Squibb, footage of a lot had no Squibb, you know, like there isn't any requirement. That's not true. That's just something they put in. There's going to be a requirement for size, lot sizes. So that's where we are at on that project.
What's involved in the affordability of these units? Is there anything in this legislation that, you know, this isn't 40B.
Correct.
So what provisions are there?
10%, I believe is the number. Within, yeah. If you want to do more, then you have to do what's called an economic feasibility study to prove that, like the 25%, you can go up to 25%, but you have to prove that economically, that it's economically feasible to work. I'd have to get you the exact language, but that's the whole, that's the whole idea. You have to do a study to show that.
Well, we only have 4%.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the 10%, the 10% is called, let's say, their minimum, you know? Anything more than that, you have to sort of prove that it's actually going to work. And you have to provide that study. So they recommend, you know, go after the 10%. And then if you choose to make alterations later on and increase that, you can. So that's all I have on that, on that update.
Board members, anybody else have any questions for the Town Planner in regards to the proposed MBTA zoning district? Seeing this as a public hearing, is anybody here for the public hearing, any questions or comments in regards to the MBTA zoning district? Let the record show that 6:31, Mr. Campbell joined us. Tony, do you want to have more updates at the proposed next date?
Yes.
Next planning board meeting?
Yes, I'd like to just keep this going.
Wonderful. I'm intending motion to continue the public hearing until tentative 11:13 would be our next tentative planning board meeting. Motion's been made, is properly seconded?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, continue the public hearing until November 13th, the tentative next planning board meeting date. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Proposed, motion carries. So we'll continue as a runner, Tony, till 11:30.
I think I said the motion.
We'll just put it on. Post it again, Tony, it's time to public.
Yeah, we'll just continue it.
Thank you, sir.
Doing okay with that, Ken?
Great, just keep going.
Moving on in our agenda, we have a 6:35 appointment, improvement to private ways. Applicant Alan Diaz, trustee, seeks a positive determination for completed work on Snow Street in conjunction with a proposed construction activity at Zero Snow Street at Assessors Map 1, Lot 1202 inclusive.
So there's...
Sure. As a procedural, let the record show that Mr. Ellis has recused himself at 6:37, please. Give Mr. Ellis a moment to leave the room. Reach out to him just a moment.
I took some, I took some, I mean, I took some as well.
Okay.
Or we can do both.
Your pitch is sufficient. Let the record reflect that Mr. Ellis has left meeting room B.
A.
Sorry. Town Planner?
So the applicant has provided a NASVIL plan for the work that he's completed down He's also provided some photographs that he took, and I did, and I also went down there today and took some photographs, which I'll put up on the, on the screen.
Great, thank you.
The plan with the grading that's shown is in, is in compliance with the plan that he proposed.
Wonderful.
I'm just going to pull up some of the photos. So this is, we're looking up Snow Street from Mont Ponce. So this is the area that the work was done, and this area here. So the road's been graded and some brush cleared and the stone placed, as you see on the plan. It's just a different view. So you see the fence line here, and this is the stone, and the road has been graded. And again, another shot as moving closer, going up Snow Street. This is the area of the stone that's shown on the plan. This is, again, going up Snow Street. And that's the stone area with all the brush that's been cleared out. And now this is looking towards Mont Ponce Street with additional brush. You cleared out some brush in that area? Or no?
Yeah, we cleared it all.
Cleared out, yeah. And again, looking down towards Mont Ponce Street with the roadway. So all this area previously, let me just pull up photo. This was previously, probably about two years ago, obviously, you can see the snow on the ground.
Yeah, it's hard part.
But there was all this brush here.
Yeah.
And let me just, one more, you know, just kind of get closer. So that fence that we were, that I was talking about, which is, so all this brush has been cleared out. So the applicant has fulfilled the requirements, the plan conforms, and at this point, I have a, basically, a positive determination for adequate access that the board can vote, endorse, and I'll pass it along to, I'll file it with the town clerk and also with the building inspector's office.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? What's the rule of the board? So a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Motion's made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to approve, the positive determination properly seconded. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No abstain.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Mr. De.
No disrespect to Mr. Benandato, he did not participate in any of the hearings, so unless he has reviewed the minutes or reviewed the tapes, and he wants to make a statement accordingly, he should not be voting.
Mr. Benandato, do you feel comfortable making a motion to be approved with review of the minutes? It's kind of like a mulligan.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. As long as he's done that, that's fine. I just don't want any questions.
We have a 3-0-2 vote. Do you want, motion carries. Tony, do you want just the one signature on this, or do you need to have all?
I would just have the three members that voted. And if you'd like to, Mr. Chair, if you want to put next to Don, Ellis recused.
Yes, I can do that.
And abstain for Mr. Kim.
10:20, 10:23?
I'll get that filed with the town clerk tomorrow.
Yes.
And I'll pass it on to the building inspector.
No second date on it?
No.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Let's see if we can find Mr. Ellis.
Does he like this in your office?
I always have a door, a window open. I always have a window open.
Yeah, it's warm in there. I'm always warm in there. I feel like I'm going to pass away after going in.
Let the record reflect that at 6:44, Mr. Ellis has returned to Meeting Room A, moving along, 6:40, master plan steering committee update. Town Planner?
So what's happened with the master plan is, I've met with a, Leannan Duggan from O'Callaghan Planning Council. We met on the 24th of October to discuss the progress.
Sorry, the 24th of October, tomorrow?
I'm sorry, yeah, it is, yeah. So I'm sorry, it was the...
September?
Yes, September, thank you.
I was thinking much the same.
Yeah.
But I was on the 16th of May.
Yep. And so we discussed the progress. She'd like to set up a master plan workshop, possibly, let's say, the 13th, which is the next planning board meeting. I thought, you know, if the board, let's say, has a meeting from like 6:30 to 7:00, and then they could have a master plan workshop from like 7:00 to 7:30.
OC bringing dinner?
What date is that?
The 13th of November.
Halloween? No, no, 13th of November.
Oh. It'll be, it would be your next planning board meeting. So let's say you have your planning board meeting from 6:30 to 7:30, and then they could have the workshop. We have Mr. Tom, go by Tom.
Key Chair.
Mr. Rafi from the Conservation Commission, he's the vice chair, I believe.
Yeah.
So he's the representing, I figured I'd have him come tonight so that the two members of the master plan steering committee can meet. So I guess the other thing too is, you know, you have three members now, we're still putting out there, seeking members of the public. I have an announcement in the Women Hanson Express. So the other thing is, you know, at some point here, the committee will have to determine what day they're going to meet, what time, you know, that type of thing. So what I'd like to do is have OCPC on the agenda for the 13th and sort of get this ball rolling as far as the committee's concerned.
Perfect.
So everyone can step away together.
Sounds like a plan.
I have to add from that.
Mr. Kim?
I think we should, I don't know if we can do this now, but I think we should just organize between the three of us, right, so that we can begin to meet. So, because we do have a quorum, and I have some things that I would like, we have a CPC meeting on November 8th, and I was hoping that we could have the master plan committee come to that meeting. Everybody there is quite interested in what's happening, and that's rare, so I assume that it would be a good thing to have those people involved as well.
Okay, yeah. We'd have to find out though, is, can you post that as a meeting tonight without having it published?
Well, it's posted in here to discuss, I don't know how it's worded, but I don't know how else we would be able to convene to do this, except at a planning board meeting. I'll defer to you guys, I don't know, the rules on that one.
It's a subcommittee of the planning board.
Master Plan Steering Committee update. So we're on the agenda to discuss the master plan steering committee. Two of the members are here, or three of the members are here, so can we...
It's a subcommittee of the planning board that's on the agenda, so.
Yeah, okay. Just want to draw them. It's up to you, if you don't feel comfortable with that.
No, that's all right.
Well, yeah, water looks good. Who's water is?
It's fine. It hurts his water.
Do you want lots of water? Are you thirsty, seriously?
No, I'm kidding, I'm just kidding. I'm just sitting there looking, I think. So how do we, how do we do this?
You're a subcommittee, I'm trying to think of Robert's rules, the F subcommittees, you know, I guess you have to decide what, what's a good night that you're going to meet.
Yeah.
Do you want to meet at night? Are you going to meet here at Town Hall?
Can we meet virtually?
I'm just kidding. Well, I know that, you know, right now, through 2025, you can meet virtually, and if I'm correct, you do not have to physically be present in a room for that to happen. So.
So I guess what do we have to do to memorialize the three of us here that are on the committee or in the room, right? So what do we do next? Do we motion to vote to have a chair and a vice chair and go from there, or what do we do?
I have to look at the Robert's rules.
So subcommittees, subcommittees report to the committee of which they are part of. If your committee has ex officio members, that means members who serve in the committee because of their position, not because of who they personally are. Ex officio members are fully voting members of committees, unless the bylaws or rules say so otherwise. And I don't think Hanson has any bylaws that talk about X factor, ex officio members.
And my other question would be, do we have to be sworn in downstairs?
No, because it's just a reporting subcommittee of the planning board.
Okay.
You know, it's not a, it's not a town.
Right.
It's not a town appointed, appointed or elected. It's just a subcommittee of the planning board.
We don't have, we don't have anything at this point, absolutely nothing. So I figured at least if we could organize.
All committees have to be sworn in. No, not when it's a, not when it's a de facto subcommittee of another, they're just gathering information and they're not...
For what it's worth, the letter I got from the select board said to go to the town clerk and get sworn in.
They're going to do that as a coverall, anyway.
Yeah, which is interesting, because I had understood that you got that letter, and understood that you didn't necessarily have to get that letter, because he's already, you know, it's just a subcommittee.
Yeah, it's just a subcommittee. It's just people meeting in that group.
Well, they haven't made it to the town clerk yet, so that doesn't have a...
Yeah, because you're already sworn in as a, as a conservation member, right? And one of the, one of the goals was to have, for us, is to have someone from conservation on the committee. And here you are, so I just wanted, so now all we have to do is decide when we choose to meet.
It's the same thing as everybody meeting up at Camp Quanti for the select board, you know, whatever that was, I can't remember what that title of that is.
Strategic planning.
Thank you. Strategic planning, it's not, you don't have to be appointed to it, it's just a subcommittee of all the other boards. There's no official, it's not elected, it's not appointed, so two volunteers and another volunteer, and so it's not, so it's up to you guys now. We'll open the floor if you want to figure out when you guys want to meet or how you want to meet.
Yeah, I'd be happy to open up the floor and figure out when we can, the three of us can get together so that we can start the process of planning for the master plan.
Is it easy to meet by Zoom?
It doesn't really matter to me. What's the suggestion, we meet on November 13th?
Well, on November 13th, they're going to have the workshop, so it'd be good to have the master, the master plan steering committee at least in place, you know, at least three members, because you'll be there, you know? And then they can start. I'm waiting on some guidance from them, because they're going to get it and say this, okay, this is what we need you to do, you know? And we're still waiting for two members of the public. I mean, I'm not sure if and when that's going to happen.
Yeah, it can be a long wait. Do you guys have JT's contact info?
I can pass, I can pass that along if you're okay with that.
I don't think any of us have each other's contact information, the three of us.
If you'd like, I, I can do that. I can send all of you each other's contact information.
Okay. So then we can discuss and figure out a time to meet, and I don't know, do we need like a chairman or?
I don't think so, because it's a, it's just a, it's just a think tank. There's no, there's no, you know, it's nice to designate somebody as a, you know, spokesperson or whatever, just like we do with the strategic planning, but on the teams, like you have a spokesperson for the group, and I don't think you need to have a chair with clerk.
So do we all have copies of the existing master plan and the proposed future one?
Do you have that, JT?
I can get you.
I have the existing.
You do?
For Conservation, I don't have the proposed.
Okay, they don't have anything as far as proposed yet. What they've, what they've done, I know one thing they did last week is, I believe that they met with the open space folks. Don was at, attended that meeting last week with OCPC, Laurie Muncie. Were they talking about, were they talking about the open space committee, or, because it was you and Phil were talking to them?
They just mentioned it, that's all. They weren't, they weren't here for that.
So what I can do is, I can get everyone, make sure that you have the current master plan, everyone's information, and, you know, you want to be on Monday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at the public.
So do we have anything to discuss? Because if we don't have to appoint anybody or create a chairman or any of that stuff, then we should have things to talk about, at least.
One thing I can, one thing I can send you is, they did send me a town, what do they call it?
You okay, Kim?
Yeah, 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 my nose is just really, I can't breathe.
There's no oxygen in it.
It's not, this room is a day.
The heat burns it all off.
Okay, so they, they have provided a community profile, which you see up on the screen. So it's over 108 pages, and it provides information about the town, demographics.
So is that like a reiteration of the master plan, or there's more information in there that's in the master?
I think this is a new information that's going to be part of the master plan.
This is from OCPC?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I can pass this along to all the members, but, you know, it gives you at a glance demographics, incomes, you know, issues and opportunities, you know? This is all part of, this will all be part of the master plan. The other thing I can do is, I can speak to the Ms. Duggan from OCPC and ask her to maybe attend, ask her, see if she's available for November the 8th to attend that meeting, and she could provide you some information, and then I can have her attend, obviously, the 13th as well.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be fine.
So that way she can give all the CPC and...
I think, you know, that's a great opportunity for her to meet historical commission. There's a bunch of committees represented in CPC, so it seems like a good place to start.
Okay. And if you don't mind, I can give her your contact informations as well. Like give OCPC, if they have any questions, they can reach out to you directly. So I guess still is, one night, well, if you had to hash anything out one night, you just want to do it as needed. In other words, call a meeting if you need it.
Yeah, we want to have a meeting, we want to talk about it. I don't think anybody here wants to meet, nothing.
So why don't we just wait until the 8th and the 13th and get a better, and get a good direction? I'll get you this information, and then you can move from there.
Okay.
And hopefully, OCPC will have more information and give a little more guidance as to what they'd like to see from the committee.
Does that work? We'll keep it as a runaround on the agenda as well for the master planning steering committee until, until it's done. I think that's going to be a bullet for the next good couple of months, right?
Yes, definitely.
Hanging around. Nothing personal, but... No, no personal offense taken. Nice to meet you, JT, thank you.
Bye.
Moving on to board business, endorsement of certificate of action, Meadowbrook Farms Residential Subdivision, Zerry County Road, Assessors Map 74, Block 0, Lot 7 and 8. Applicant Ellis Builders and Development, Representative Force Engineering Company. Town Planner?
Jeff Hassett said he was not going to be able to attend this evening's meeting, which is fine. I have a certificate of action here for the board to endorse. You'll see that at the top, it's the date, there's the date that the board approved it, but at the last page, the date of your endorsement will be today. So then that, what I'll, I'll file that with the town clerk, 28PO period will start, and then once they've addressed any of the issues or items, we'll say in that certificate of action, because there's some things they need to do prior to any endorsement of the bylaws.
And we've got the reflected changes that we had at the last meeting here tonight?
Yes.
Which were...
We added special condition, I believe, M.
The applicant shall locate all individual water shut-off valves between the back of the proposed sidewalk and the edge of the 40-foot right away. No water shut-off valves would be located within the proposed sidewalk.
So this is, this doesn't deviate off from what was previously discussed, right?
With just some minor edits that we discussed at the last, at the last meeting.
Do we need a motion on this? Will we sign the lease? I've got the, I've got the...
Clean copy.
Yeah, the wet copy here, clean copy here. Yeah, we could do it as a motion. I'll make that motion, and we approve this certificate of action. Mr. Kim has a motion to approve this certificate of action. Second, Mr. Benandato, any discussion in regards to that motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Inanimate.
It is.
Tony, keep looking at it. October 28th.
An invited guest over here. There was an uninvited guest over there.
Yeah, he only has to sign one, right?
Right, I just need you all to sign that, and file that to the town clerk.
Everyone needs to have a special family.
Just make sure you sign your own name.
So after this, this will go forward, be filed at town clerk, the appeals hearing, then after the appeals hearing is over, we'll talk, start talking about covenants and things like that?
Yes, they have, they have to put a covenant together. There's information in this certificate of action that's gonna be part of the covenant.
Yes.
And then they're going to have to record the covenant. They'll have to record the covenant and get that recording information on the plans as well.
We'll have that info probably by the.
Do you have the rest of it?
Hmm?
Do you have the rest of it? Oh. Also wondering, is she, you want this?
I'll put it all back in.
Sure, you should have got enough of it.
Yeah, so at the next meeting, we'll have, we should have all the good info about the covenant and that.
Yes. That's the proof of the covenant.
The whole packet.
Is this more to this?
Hi.
It was a whole packet.
I'm just trying.
Yeah.
I don't, it's not numbered, so.
Oh, wait, is that funny? Blame John. Mental note, next time, just pass it on the signing sheet.
Put the signing sheet on the, put the signing sheet. Think we're good.
Great. Boots on the ground project coming up. Six fifty, board business subcommittee updates. Nothing from most open space. I don't think that's gonna kick off until the master plan starts getting done. And then OCPC, there's an upcoming meeting that Tony is going to be attending virtually, I believe.
Yes.
Tomorrow, Wednesday night, Wednesday night. That's all I have. There hasn't been anything other than that from OCPC except for the master plan stuff Tony's already discussed. Mr. Ellis?
Well, we're doing pretty good, good. We've got the completed plans that Tony has and we had a meeting Saturday. With some of the residents about where the parking is and in view of their backyards and things like that. We had a productive meeting out there with them. Tony was there and he did an excellent job of explaining things to them. And it was a little bit of rain, not much. We went around and looked at some of the other areas also for the playground is delineated. And was brought to the attention by Tony to them on the location where the things would be. And it's very productive. We were supposed to have a meeting with the Plymouth Playground Directors. About playgrounds and parks and things like that, but had to get canceled. That was supposed to be. Tonight, was it? No.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. And so that's tentatively gonna be, I think, the thirteenth, whichever, wherever the next Tuesday is. And we'll see. And they also have, will have a virtual. System set up for the people that can't make it on the committees and stuff, so.
Nice.
It'll be good, but we are moving along and it's, it's good to see this coming. Everybody seems to be gentlemen together.
Nice, long time coming.
Yes.
Great, thanks for the efforts for that. Appreciate it. Looking forward to that being implemented. Well, Mr. Coe?
Economic Development. We discussed our results from Hanson Day, which were really, we, we did a great job with Hanson Day this year, but we're always looking to make it bigger and better. So we're always looking for suggestions for that. We also had, we've been working on our economic development outreach letter to local businesses. And we do have some businesses starting to reach out to us and offer some input, so. Things are going well.
Some local retail space coming up.
We do, yeah.
Finish of Mr. Egan's property over there.
Yeah, nine ninety-nine means three four.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kim, CPC.
We meet on November tenth. We have our legislative required public forum on that date, so anyone who would like to attend, curious about how things operate, everyone is welcome. We have not met recently. So we also have a new member from the housing authority that's been, that's joining the community preservation committee. Other than that, that's all I have. And the master plan steering committee, you are all here for that.
Mr. Ben and Al, thanks, Mr. Kim, appreciate it. Mr. Ben and Al, drainage and stormwater committee.
Yeah, yeah, the last two months have been pretty much all over for me, but Ed Heel is on the, the select board part of this, so we need to get together and pick something together sooner than later.
Just as an update, I, I did email, I did email Dr. Skellenger to ask him to go over to Main Street after the Brockton Water Main break. It was, I asked him if he could go over and just take a look down over there to see what the impact was on Port Meadow Brook and Dawn's Meadow. And I haven't been able to check my email yet, but I'll check that back just to see if there's anything that came out of that. You know, there's quite a bit of drainage that was impacted, private properties as well. So when I have that back, I'll pass that along.
Can I speak to that, Joe?
Mr. Kim?
Unless you want to handle it in a different section, because you also added that into the agenda, I believe, discussion of that, I don't know if that's true. But so on the, on the Main Street thing, I reached out, Frank is away from the number four.
Okay.
I had talked to Tony about it and I also reached out to Phil Clemmons and Lisa Green. So the long and short of it is there was a water main break by Brockton. And Hanson Water Department arrived to determine that it wasn't them. So, and then, you know, Brockton Water was called. It took them over five hours to show up, just point of, you know, information on that one. And when they did arrive, they dug a hole, made their repairs and swept it off to the side of the road and left. Therefore, the next day it rained and quite a lot of silt went down the roadway, past Paul's Development and some of it in his development in the roadway. And so it also went down to the river and went in the river as well. So I've been trying to get people to respond to the, the lack of response. Yeah, I mean, everywhere I went, it was just kind of like, well, you know. So the highway survey, I saw him at the strategic planning thing and he told me it was all set. So just so you guys know, the correct protocol is when there's a breach like that for a stream or a river, the Rivers Act applies. And they, the Conservation Commission should have been immediately notified that there was a problem, which they were not. And in fact, when I called Phil almost a week later, he had no knowledge of it at all. So I called Lisa and I asked her, we need some kind of a, like a policy for both the, the water department and highway department. For their response and how they're supposed to respond and what they should do. And also Brockton Water, that's kind of an insult, you know? They just, they just didn't care.
Yeah. If they're engaged, if there's an impact, they definitely need to be engaged.
I, you know, rather than try to like, you know, hang and gimlet people who made mistakes, I, I just think it's important that we see these mistakes, call them out. And, you know, come up with some kind of a policy to address these issues, because it's happened more than once, it'll happen again. It always happens, but people in management and control should be following the right procedures, contacting the correct people and so forth. That's all I had to say about it.
We gotta get some more clarification about where that jurisdiction is gonna fall when, when MS four, when is that? June of twenty-four, is that when it comes in?
Yeah, the high, I know that the highway superintendent's been working with, closely with the environmental partners to implement the plan. And there's some paperwork I assisted with that he's turned in, so they're, I think they've made. Theirs townwide evaluation and have created a, we'll say a priority list. And some of those locations include, let's say, town hall. So because there is, there is some drainage in the parking lot for the town hall. But it's not exactly what you'd call up to today's standard. For instance, the lower parking area drains to one catch basin, which then is in a, goes into a chamber, concrete tank. And then it outfalls to the pond. But if you actually stand there and you notice where the pond elevation is and where the water elevation of the tank is. I cannot imagine that that tank is not being back washed by the pond. So there's remediation that will be taking place at some point to, let's say, correct that, prevent that from happening. Which will get interesting because of the fact that with stormwater management, you know? The, the parking lot there does not exact, there isn't any room for a detention basin. So it would have to be some kind of infiltration basin. And then that's gonna depend on separation to groundwater table. So it could get, it'll be a very interesting way to sort of try and treat this, the drainage, at least in the lower parking.
Won't be the lower parking lot anymore.
Yeah, the, the upper, the upper parking lot, there actually is drainage, catch basins that tie into manholes and then a grit chamber. And then out into a infiltration system in the green. And I actually went out there and stuck my head around, take a look at it for myself and see what was going on. And so it's there, it seems to be functioning. But there was one thing that I noticed that wasn't on the plan is there's also a catch basin in a low spot, sort of where this infiltration system is. So now I'm wondering if it's also picking up the green and the parking lot, so is it sized properly, you know? So that's all things that will eventually get to be examined. And those are costs that, you know, unless they offer grant money, we're probably gonna have to get.
Can that be tied into the, I know there's a street drain very close to that. It goes in, it goes into a chamber and then goes again, gets sent into the.
Pond?
The pond.
Unless the whole thing is.
And.
That's the key thing is keeping it from going into the pond.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
The pond's pretty much a stormwater management structure at this point.
You could say that.
Yeah.
You could say that.
Yep.
I just certainly think that the, the October twelfth incident with Brockton's main, for me anyway, it brings to light that it's Brockton's main. We also have Abington Rockland that have mains. And if these things break, that if we need to review policies and agreements with those towns, I think it's, because of that. When you drove down, if you drove down Main Street after October twelfth, it was pretty damaging. So I wouldn't be surprised if the HOAs in those areas didn't reach out or the private citizens didn't reach out. Because the drainage basins, they have to be full now. I can only imagine that they're full.
The things that were impacted, you know, like the river was definitely impacted, right? And so were the, the stormwater management structures on, you know, Brookside, those two streets. I don't know what their names are for sure, but those have been impacted. So what I was told is that it was all cleaned up, right? And, you know, I don't feel comfortable with that, you know, I don't know what to do about that, but, you know, they say, okay, well, it's all set, then what more can I do? But, you know, and just pointing out that I think the damage was more significant than people think because, you know, all that sand and the, and all those. Stormwater management structures should be cleaned out and I have to be honest with you, what do we care? We should be calling Brockton and say, you can act, these are the, you know, structures that are gonna have to be cleaned as a result of the work that you've done.
Good point.
And call us when it's finished. You know what I mean? That's my thought. I mean, it's really their problem, not ours. And I don't understand why we went and cleaned it up, so. One of those things.
Anybody else have anything as far as some community updates? Moving on, next on the agenda is discussion investigating the expansion of existing business zones and flexible overlay zone, Town Planner.
So. Here, what you see on the screen is our current zoning graph. And. So, so the one on the screen is actually two thousand nineteen, the one on the wall is two thousand fourteen. Not that there's been any significant changes there. But as you can see on the map, on the map, we have business zones.
Can you zoom in on that, Tony?
Sure.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. So these areas here demarcate business zones. So there's one, as you know, runs up along Liberty Street out to West Washington. And then as you get towards Main Street, you have one near the Pembroke line, one near Mont Pontsett. One in the area of High Street and one in the area of Elm Street. And also this hatched area you see along Main Street is known as the flexible overlay zone. And you'll see that there's another hatched area along West Washington Street, which is the flexible overlay zone, which allows for a mixed use of retail and housing. So obviously Hanson's looking to try and increase revenue. And one thought I had brought up to the economic development committee and then now bringing to the planning board is just as a discussion. Or to see if there's any interest or support in expanding the business zones. And when I say expanding, I'm not talking about, you know, encompassing three square miles and turn to a business zone or creating a business zones. But maybe expanding the existing business zones as they're shown on the map now. Whether it's, you know, another block or two blocks to try and increase the, the business zones.
How is it, Tony, that we don't have a, the business zone isn't extended from there at the, at the S curve of fifty-eight? So the top of the existing down to, down to the Whitman Spring Street intersection? That whole, you know, that, that, actually, because this business is along that whole run.
Well, you know, some of the businesses may have be, have been existing, they may have.
Pre-existing, yeah.
Yeah.
It's only Wyman and, and the bottom, used to be called the forty-five or something.
Called forty-five?
Yeah.
I'd like to, if I may, at the intersection here of Liberty and, and Winter Street, I have a, and it's in my update, but I'd like to read it now if I may. Is correspondence from a resident. A Justine Huntley and she owns, I'll read the letter to her. So September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, I received this letter, Hanson Planning Board. Dear sir, I am writing to ask the board to study the zoning of the property I own at five five nine Liberty Street. As you consider the need to attract more business to Hanson and increase the tax base, my property might work well into your planning. Nearby businesses include ferries, a dentist, a bake shop, a pool business and a funeral home, so changing the zoning appears appropriate. I am a senior citizen and have been a taxpayer in Hanson for forty years. As part of the inevitable process of estate planning, I am investigating the potential value of this property that I have owned for many years. I look forward to your reply respectfully, Justine Huntley. So she owns the property at the intersection right across from town hall, Winter and Liberty, and I'll zoom up on that. Right, so this is currently a residence B zone. On the other side, which is Gorwin Drive, there is a dentist. So I'm floating the idea basically to the, I did it for the economic development committee who seemed in favor of at least investigating it. And now I'm also bringing this to the planning board. If you wish me to investigate looking at the properties that are within these, adjacent to these zones and expanding, expanding these zones. It's one of the things of, you know, if there's no interest or support, then I won't go after it. But if there is, because we're not getting a lot of folks that want to bring in business, small businesses, but into town. And they're limited because of the zoning. Or in certain cases, on Liberty Street, the zoning line that interferes, it's a two-way compartment next to the PCA. And it really hurts that. Now, there is a portion of that property that has a resource area, so they're limited. But even with that, they can't use the entire, you can't really utilize the entire property. So it's caused, at least while I've been here, probably four different applications before the zoning board that have just kind of gone away.
Sure.
So I know that in the past, there have been investigations of. So, uh, I know that in the past, there had been investigations of creating new business zones. Or new business corridors, but I, and I just wanna know if the, if there's any interest in revisiting and just expanding what we have now. And I, and not, and I'm not looking to go crazy, but just look at what's adjacent to it, and like I said, you know, do we go, let's say, another block? Or five hundred feet or something like that, just to see what's available. So that if a business wants to come in, they can go into a business zone, there's some spaces for them to maybe investigate and put a business in. So, that's what, that's what this, this is about. Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like just to, you know, some information on it. Not this board, but the prior board tried to do that at one time to, to the, uh, left and right side going up. To get more of a depth, because you can, a hundred and twenty-five feet, I think it is, right now. You can't put much in there, you know, for commercial businesses. So we tried to get it extended back, uh, we were all set to go to the town meeting on it. And it was, was kind of requested to hold it, and that's where it's been since. But we did, uh, an overlay of what's there and what needed to be changed. And at the corner there of Mr. Huntley's property, um, we talked about that. But there was a lot of people at that time didn't want commercial, but I think it's changed. Myself, I think I would go through to change the, uh, commercial business or a combination of.
I'm, I'm speaking more business versus, and no, I'm not speaking of commercial industrial, I'm just talking business.
Well, they call it, for some reason, CBA calls it commercial there. That's, they consider co- commercial, regular business. Uh, and they did that when they approved up for Mr. Sheen to go in. And, uh, put his landscaping business or construction business. I don't know why, but they consider it.
They call it commercial?
Yeah, but not commercial.
Is the difference like they're considering, cause he has a, a, it's not just brick and mortar, but he's also selling a product?
Could be, I'd have to take a look at that. You know, cause we have a commercial industrial zone as well, as you're aware, you know, this is just.
Well, I think it's commercial, industrial, and then there's just commercial, business.
It's just business.
You know, they, they consider it different for some reason. I, I, you know, I was surprised too, but I had asked about.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it as strictly the business zone and the businesses that are allowed in the business zone.
Right.
You know.
I think if we're gonna try to do this to, to, what I was bringing up earlier, I think we ought to correct the fact that that stretch of Liberty Street going down to. Spring is, is not considered, we've got three businesses, there's, there's, there's the pub. There's the landscape business, then there's, isn't there also, um, Hatch, Hatch Post Restaurant?
Can I, can I add to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I remember in four thousand eight, right, on a master plan committee, it was my understanding that, um. There were, there's enough resident, residences there, right? Uh, and all the businesses that exist there now are grandfathered before this was, this zoning was done. And that's why they're there.
Okay.
And, you know, so the idea that you would, uh, turn that area into a commercial enterprise zone. Or whatever you wanna call it, where businesses would be allowed, um, this, this, uh, a very residential area. Right, if you look at it, right, there's a few businesses there, but most of the people.
Most of it's residential.
As residential.
Yeah, I got you.
So those people are, are acutely affected as well as when you come back down to the original discussion. You know, at that intersection of Winter Street, um, you know, yeah, there's a, um, there's a business across the street. Which has been there since probably the eighteen hundreds or something, who knows how long that's been there, but that site's been commercially developed since, I think, the nineteen forty. Right, way before any zoning was ever done. And so then coming down in that stretch of Liberty Street, uh, that's mostly residential as well. Right, there's a pond across from it, you got the Thomas Mill, and then there's a small dentist office, which, you know, you have to look twice to realize it's not residential. So now you've got all of those houses that are within that area. Um, you know, I'm sure some of them would love to sell to somebody so that they can, you know, uh, make a profit. But the reality is, is, um, that, that corner on that side of the street, everything going down after ferries is residential. So I just wanna, uh, speak to those people that live in that area behind her, who are all residential beyond that point. And the other thing is, uh, that it's a significant resource area. Um, her property is very limited, it almost, um, it'd almost be impossible. Once you take that house down, right, uh, according to the conservation rule, you wouldn't even be able to put anything there anymore. So, uh, again, that was grandfathered, that house has been there since, um, I don't know, probably the thirties anyway. So, um, you know, for us to zone that as business, I think is a mistake. Because, you know, you could go and drive, it's a residential area, you know, um, you, you've got Kink's Landing right around the corner. Again, that's residential, and the whole area, you know, uh, other than those two businesses that were discussed. Uh, the rest of it's pretty much, um, pretty quiet.
Well, there's also.
That's just my two cents.
I mean, there's also the Main Street area, which, you know. I look at the Main Street area here and see that, you know, there's, there's businesses here, and so, you know. Considering that, the, the town is hoping to, let's say, revitalize that Main Street section, you can see that.
And that ocean spring plant is up for sale.
Yeah.
God, man.
Just, just the front part.
The ma-
That's, yeah, yeah.
You know, the ma- Main Street, you have, you know, section there, section there.
When I saw that.
A section there and a section there, so, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm bringing this to the, I'm just bringing this up. And see if there's any interest at all, if there is, I'll investigate it, if there isn't, then I won't. I'll pursue other.
Can I just quickly offer one quick thing?
Sure.
You know, we haven't even built out the existing business areas that we have. You know, like we have the Main Street area, Marangello's place, you've got those two buildings that are now going up, there's gonna be retail, uh, in businesses and no. And, you know, uh, I see all kinds of empty buildings that don't have anybody in them. So, um, to be talking about expanding business zoning, I think we first have to make sure that we're fully built out as it is. And I mean, so I guess what I don't see is the real need, uh, for expanded business zones. When we haven't even filled the ones we have. So, you know, if we fill them, then it'd be like, hey, you know, maybe we should rethink this, because we have nowhere for business to go. Then, you know, you can start looking at it, but as it sits, we're not even at, like, uh, probably at somewhere around forty percent occupancy. In what we have now.
Mr. Cohen? I just had a, a point. We, we do have some lots, uh, uh, in town, uh, a couple that we've, we've discussed before on Liberty Street. Where the lot is, is partially in two different residential zones, uh, partially business, partially residential. And that's a hurdle for those businesses to go in there, we've talked about that. So if we looked specifically at some of those lots. That are holding businesses back from going into those areas. We might be, uh, getting somewhere on certain lots. And I, I, I know it's a little bit of a gray area trying to, you know, talk about these very specific lots. But they are, you know, teetering between two different zones. And people are looking to put businesses in, into those zones, and we've had, what, four or five denials on one property in particular?
Yeah, they sort of just fall apart.
And they don't work.
Dies on the vine?
Yeah.
It's not the lot next to the VCA?
Yeah.
Is it because of the resource area in the back?
It's because of the zoning line, really, that seems to kill it.
How does that, how does that?
Because you can only, you can only encroach thirty feet into the residential zone. And beyond that, you cannot do anything with your business. So you may have a section of property that you wanna use for whatever, for your business, and you can't.
Yeah, but none of, none of that area back there that you're talking about, like, uh, the one next to VCA is a perfect example. Once you get to the back, there's a pile of dirt on one side. Well, after that, uh, Abington Water goes through there, there's a culvert that runs through, after Cushion Pond. Uh, there's a lot of reasons why you wouldn't want to zone those as commercial, because even if you did, you wouldn't be able to use them. Because you already have easements across them. So that's the real dilemma in that area. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but.
No, I know there's a, the, there's the, I know the water easement, but it's not, this particular lot doesn't seem to affect it. It just, it's the zoning line that affects it. Now, there is a resource area at the back, so they are eliminated part of it. But it's still sort of, they don't get that full benefit.
Did the town sell the lot just next to that, that they owned for the proposed septic for the middle school?
I don't.
But the, uh, reserve area for the septic system, Hanson Middle, which is next to the, uh, VCA and the lot. And then there's a lot between that and Ed Sheen. I don't know what the size of it is, but, um, I, I think they tried to auction it off and nobody would buy it.
Nobody bought it.
Yeah, because of its size. You know, it would have to be added to the, either one of the two lots, but given the price that was thrown out there, neither one of those people felt like it was worth doing that.
Tony, can we keep this as that kind of a flavor of the day and give it back on November thirteen?
Yeah, you can table it, think about it, like I said, this is just trying to throw out something, you know, we're trying to get revenue. And, you know, and business, and, you know, Hanson's never gonna be a big, huge, uh. You know, other, other than the plaza that is Shaw's, I mean, I don't see Hanson never having anything other than that.
There's no highway. We have a highway department, but no highway.
Uh, so the other, the other thing was, you know, let's say potentially looking at, uh, an expansion of maybe the flex overlay zone, let's say, along Main Street. You know, uh, you know, let's say you took that over to, uh. Maybe to like, you know, Robinson Street or something like that, you know, or Crooker Place, you know, just to take a look to see if that. Cause you're gonna get a business flavor there, because it's a mixed-use retail and, and, um, residential.
Yeah, it's likely gonna get bigger, because behind, um, in the back there, there's what, three, seven acres back there that's owned by somebody.
Yeah, between.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, between the height, right here.
That's gonna end up being, uh, a significantly different area in the next five years.
That's part of, that's actually where the MBTA district will be.
Right.
Would be. Because you could actually, if you do it, you could actually build something versus converting it.
But that, I mean, it's mostly, I don't see very much residential there, other than what's being built now. Right, there's a few houses here and there that are all commercially owned, you know? So, I mean, that's a, a bad, in my mind, I'd rather focus on, on that end of town. Than, you know, uh, trying to squeeze something in the intersection of Main Street and.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree, but it's just, it's a business zone, so I'm looking at expanding the business zones. So it's a matter of looking at all of them and saying, okay, which ones might be worth expanding? Now, the, now the fact that you have the intersection of Liberty and Winter, you know, obviously this resident would like to see it in a business zone. Cause it'll benefit them, you know, um. They might have a point, cause it's an intersection, I guess, and you have business on one end, so maybe if you had a little business zone, yeah, but, you know, whatever. But it's more, I also look at Main Street and say, okay, well, we have pockets of business, we have a flex overlay zone, you know? And then we still have along Main Street, other people coming in saying, hey, I'd like to put a business in, and they're, I'll put a business in, and it's like, well, you can't, there's no, you know? Like, for instance, like the old, the old VCA, which was, they could use it for nothing else other than that purpose.
Right.
So that property wound up being sold and is, we've, we've been returned to residential. And it's unfortunate, it's a shame, because really that building should be a business, because there's enough room there for small, a couple of small businesses to move in. But it's not in a business zone. So, you know, I'm thinking, if I, if I'm picking one or two areas, I'm thinking more Main Street than necessarily Liberty Street.
Same as the doctor's office across the street.
Yeah.
Went back to a residence.
Yeah, and then, then on Main Street, you know, there's, uh, there's a parking lot next to Spiro's. Then there's a piece of property adjacent to that with two buildings, there's a, what was it, attorney's office, and in the back, there's an office building, you know? But they, I think they technically, no, no, they were in, yeah, I think they were in the business zone.
Well, they fall off.
This is the point of what, no matter what we decide, it has to be approved by town meeting anyway. Correct, like I said, again, this is a, an idea.
Yeah.
To try and see if it's, if there's any support for it, if there isn't, then move on to something else.
Mr. Ellis?
The business area that we have now up on, uh, twenty-seven where the.
Industrial Park?
You know, well, yeah, the industrial park, it's gotta be more development up and through there. You've got plenty of land there.
Well, you have the well, and there's a lot of conservation land, and there's the well out in here.
Well, the, the well, you, it depends, the well, you, you, if you fall within the guidelines of DEP. You can build things and you can make sure that whatever the business goes in, that it has all the, um, hazards would be. Eliminated, you know, um, we've talked about that over years to, 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 to do that area. And we tried, but I think if you put an overlay, just, just expand it on, on, um, Route fifty-eight. Just expand the depth on it, that's all that's holding that back, cause it's, it's got, um, go back through, uh.
Can't you go back through the lot line?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying, Tony?
Change it to.
Go to, go to the lot lines of each little properties on that side and zone it one thing or the other. I mean, I think that's a valuable thing to do.
Right, that's what I, that's why I like, for this particular lot, this next to the VCA, it's like, jeez, that lot should have just all been in the business zone.
Right.
Cause it hurts it, so there, there is, there is existing.
Oh, you run a, you run a, you run a fickle decision doing that. Because people that have resident A, resident double A lots, they're, they're gonna come and ask for their lots to be either one or the other. It's a lot of other divided lots, right? We opened them up a can of worms, but.
Well, we're doing it to a limited amount of lots, you know, and it's obviously in an area for this commercial. The only, the only downside to this whole thing is that, you know, you get that guy on the other side, and we're going nameless, who's making a big mess down there. And in the middle of like, you know, um, you know, he's not using this property correctly. So it makes everybody else look bad, but, uh, even he would benefit from having his property lines zoned for business.
Yeah.
And that, and.
Can you bring that down, please?
What section are you looking for, Don?
We were talking about down the, sort of, spring.
Write down all the way.
Only section. All, all the way down, if you went back further, now you're gonna go into like a residential area too. Ain't a lot of that's ready, but, but that's, that's up to the owners, they don't have to sell, they don't have to move. But if somebody comes in and offers them a lot of money to do stuff, they got that, uh, car business that's up there across from this entrance to the school. Um, they've got businesses next door to the driveway that goes there, but it's all shallow, you know? It, it would be better to have that, it could be medical buildings, it could be anything.
Well, like I said, this is just a thought, it's not something that you have to decide tonight.
I think you should look either way.
This is something to carry.
See what can be done.
And, you know, kick it around, and on the thirteenth, you can, you know.
Yeah, let's do that, let's keep it as a runner, and then on the thirteenth, we'll come back with our, our, even do some research, come back with our individual opinions. And, uh, and then, and then see if we wanna have Tony spend some time on that. That's what Tony's basically asking, do you want to?
Yeah, basically, I'm saying, look, I, I get, because obviously, it takes, it's gonna take time to figure out zoning, changing the maps. It's a whole process.
Yeah.
And it's a long tedious process, so it's one of those, if there's like, no way, don't even bother, I'll move on to something else. If it's, yeah, look, you know, take a look at it, because if it's gonna help make some things better. And again, I'm not saying, well, all right, let's run, let's expand this business from, uh, you know, the Pembroke line. All the way to the East Bridgewater line, I'm just saying, look at the existing business zones, maybe make some adjustments, maybe include a couple of more lots. Something that might, you know, that's on.
Talking about zoning, I'm actually a little shocked that Hanson doesn't have a historical zone there.
Got it. Can I, can I just add something to this real quick? Uh, I, I don't know if I just lost my thought. But, um, on the master plan, right, uh, if we were to read it, right, it has some justification for the way, reasons. Why that business zone was set up the way it was. So I think that's worthy of looking at that, just to be sure, because.
I'll come back around to.
Yeah, yeah, I know, there were a lot of, I remember there was a lot of discussions about that, uh, the resource areas, and then there. I mean, you know, when you go back to the industrial park that you guys were just looking at a little while ago. Uh, the Paul Meadowbrook meanders through there and across the street, and all of, behind the, um, you know, that, what is that? I don't know what that building is called, but over by the farm that's back there. So, you know, Paul Meadowbrook is, would be significantly impacted by a business district there. I might, I think you might get some opposition for that, even though.
Well, there is a, there is a mixed use, there is a mixed use up through that.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, so, that would, that would have business in.
Mr. Ellis, final comment, and I think we can move on until November. Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, can we come up with something that would eliminate, cause we're part of zoning, right? We zone residential area, we zone commercial area, and so on. For requirements, so we don't have what we have now with that asphalt company on the corner.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Cameron was referring to.
We've gotta do something.
Don't wanna, don't wanna put too much in. Don't want to put too much on the agenda.
People coming into town, it looks terrible. There's no reason we should have that.
I can.
I don't understand why the selectmen haven't come up with something.
Well, the, I, my understanding is.
In litigation.
Yes, the town is, the town is in litigation with that gentleman.
And I wouldn't say any more than that.
Yeah, and I'll leave it at that. And.
What's the litigation over?
And he has gone.
Can't talk about it.
And he, and he has, and he has gone before the zoning board for some preliminary discussion, so.
Yeah, well, we probably don't have anything you can put your teeth in because we don't have the regulations. You know, we need to make the regulations without, without signaling him out, but to cover everybody, anybody in town.
Yeah, but we'll talk about that on the thirteenth.
So no matter how you zone it, right, the guy's still gonna do what he wants to do. So even if you change the zoning, it's not gonna change his mental capacity to do what he's done up to this point, right? So I don't think that zoning is the cure for that problem, but.
Well, you need the, you need the regulation for the zoned area.
There is some regulation that's in, there's been a violation, so you could read a little bit about it.
What, tar and feather?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Moving on to approval of the September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three public meeting minutes and amended August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three minutes. Is there any discussion, is there a motion in regards to approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion for that.
Mr. Kement has made the motion. Consent, Mr. Kement, for both meetings?
Yes.
Is the motion, is the motion for consent for approval of the minutes from September twenty-fifth as well as the amended August twenty-eighth?
Second.
Motion for minute second. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none?
Mr. Ellis will have to abstain from that.
Which one?
Mr. Ellis will have to abstain from both.
Thank you for the correction on that. So Mr. Ellis will have to abstain for both. I can't vote, yeah. And Mr. Benignato, did you review the minutes? Are you okay with voting on them?
Yeah.
Again, it's called the Mulligan Rule. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero one, four zero one, as a consent. Moving on to administration, town planner update.
So I've read the correspondence on five-five-nine Liberty Street, so we have two sets of invoices here that we need signatures on from the board.
That means me. Five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the highway environmental assessment of.
Weston and Sampson.
Weston and Sampson. This is the, this is all the ground water. Any questions in regards to that invoice? And then next, eleven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
That should be for Verdantis for peer review work on Meadowbrook.
Peer review on Meadowbrook. Anybody have any questions in regards to Verdantis's peer review?
I think they did a pretty good job last night. They kept a film in the past. Those are shot.
Want to move on, Tony?
Sure. Highway Department survey update. So Weston and Sampson has completed a phase one survey and assessment of the Highway Department site. I do have the report if anyone is interested. I can forward it to you. Just let me know. So they did not find anything, they didn't find any asbestos, they didn't find any PCP, they didn't find any, there wasn't anything bad in the ground where they looked.
This is the Highway Department?
Correct.
So do we have flags for where they looked and where they didn't look?
Uh, no, they were, they, one thing they did recommend was a, what they call a phase two for areas, let's say, at the, in the ball fields or in the piles that are out in the back. But I reached out to them regarding what a cost would be and what a phase two would include. And they said, that's not something that they would recommend right now. It's more like, if and when you decide to put up, let's say, a DPW building in those areas, that's when you would do a phase two assessment to just check the ground. But I do have, like I said, I have the report and I can forward, actually, I can forward it to everyone.
Yeah, if you want to do that.
And you can, it's, you know, interesting reading. So they've, they've completed their work, they've completed it within budget, actually under budget. And so now.
So are we gonna do a phase two?
Well, now it's up to the town as to, now that McQuan is coming down, as everyone knows, if you haven't driven by there, the McQuan School is coming down.
It's actually almost all down.
What the, what Hanson wants to do with McQuan, if there's an appetite for shifting the, all the fields to that site and making that an athletic complex, and then looking for funding for a new Highway Department building on the Indian Head Street site, where they are now. So I guess those discussions are, let's say, beginning in the very preliminary phase to determine what's gonna happen. But then once there's a final determination, you know, if we get to that, it says, hey, yes, we want, we need to build the highway building, which they're in desperate need of, then the phase two would kick in.
Is there any benefit, Tony, in regards to attending the conversation about proposing a combined and turning it into a DPW? Would that, would that bring in any funding?
I'd have to look, I haven't seen really any grants that would, that apply to DPW buildings, you know, or highway-type situations. And as you know, that a combination of the two, creating a DPW has been, always been a ticklish subject, I guess, in Hanson, so.
What is the, is there anything that's, is there anything that's a detriment to the town by not having a DPW, you know?
I'd have to look into that to see if there's any particular, like, state funding that you get.
Or that you don't get.
No, that you don't have a DPW. Well, yeah, I'd have to look into that. I don't have the answers on that.
I think it'd be worth it to take another look at it because most of the people that were opposed to a DPW are either dead or moved on, you know? So, you know, I'm just, just saying.
That was John Kement that said that?
For the recording.
For the rap kid, that was John Kement.
Get that in the minutes. If there is, if there's anything that's significant, you know, the town's missing out on this because you don't have a combined DPW. It's certainly worth figuring out, especially if that's a development issue.
Right, you know, and the site is large enough that if it's still a separate entities, that you could have a second building if you can fund it.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they're in separate buildings but on the same site, which then would free up that building that's over there on West Washington Street, which is in the commercial industrial zone for commercial industrial use. And that would benefit the town at least tax-wise.
Absolutely.
The one-stop grant update, as you know, the master plan's moving forward, the pedestrian improvements grant is moving forward. Verdantis has, they did a drone survey, and we don't have time this evening, but it's, they sent me a link to it. It's really interesting how, you know, Drone did the survey, it's a three-D, real-time, and you can measure whatever you want, houses, poles, it's fantastic.
Of what area do they?
Of all of Main Street that they were doing, pretty much most of Main Street, but especially the area that they were doing. As far as the, and so they've come up with a preliminary, very preliminary design with some cross-sections every two hundred and fifty feet. So they're working on that. As far as the FY twenty-four grants, I'll have information hopefully for you at the next meeting on what the results of those grants for Hanson were. Main Street sidewalks, this one is, there was a plan done in two thousand fourteen for Main Street that showed sidewalks improvements from High, if it was High Street all the way to Route fifty-eight. It was done by a company called VHB. Well, it just so happens that VHB is the company that's helping out with the MBTA. So I reached out to them and asked them to give me a proposal on revising those plans to two thousand twenty-three standards. Hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Holy geez. Just to bring up the plans up to.
Right, so when I met with VHB last week, Luke Mitchell, who was, I spoke to him on both of these, he asked me about it, and I said, well, sticker shock. And so we're gonna go, we're gonna have another meeting and sort of go back to the drawing board, if you will, try and make some determinations because that's, a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars isn't gonna happen. If they can't bring it down to, let's say, something that's more palatable, because I think a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars is way too much money. Then what I would do is take the two thousand fourteen plans and in FY twenty-five one-stop grants, I would go after a grant, use those plans and try and get monies to cover the cost of revising them. And, or trying to get money also for construction. Now, one, now, one thing that would happen, I'm sorry, one thing that would happen is, if we do that, then we could get sidewalks from High Street out to fifty-eight, and it would go by, like, say, the Elsie Thomas School. So we'd be able to sort of interconnect that area with the train. So that's what that Main Street sidewalks subject is about.
You're done?
Yes.
Mr. Kement first.
So I just wanted to ask, I know that's actually the Main Street that you're talking about, it's just been upgraded, you know, roadwork's been done. Is there some kind of a moratorium on how long, you know, that has to stay before it can be touched?
Well, the highway superintendent talked about five years. Now, as you know, because it takes time for things to get through, you know, we have, we're getting the pedestrian improvements grant. And I had reached out to Verdantis and said, listen, we have this road that's been milled and overlaid. So let's say five years not touching it. Can you take a look at setting your sidewalk back from the edge of the road where you could put the sidewalk in without disturbing the actual road? And so they are gonna look, take a look at that and see if that's feasible with the amount of room that they have within the, within the right of way. And I believe, I'd have to go back and look at these plans, that, that may be the case with these particular plans, where they was, where the sidewalk was set back, that it was like an eighteen-inch grass strip, if you will, between the edge of pavement and the sidewalk. So. Yeah, I, when I, when I saw it, I was, I was like, uh, no way.
Just a point of interest for you, Tony, that the company that you're talking to, that had the plans for the sidewalk, they found it out to land planning. So land planning did all the survey work, and they had all the plans on the sidewalks, the locations.
Oh, I, I have those plans.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have, I have, I have all that information because they actually provided the work instruments. So in other words, they sent, they sent copies of the plans in a PDF form, and they also sent copies of the drawings. So I have, basically, I have a working set of drawings already.
What we were gonna do is, back at that time, it was only like fifteen thousand dollars, and they were gonna upgrade the plans along the, for the sidewalks from the intersection of fifty-eight and twenty-seven all the way up to High Street and beyond to connect to the, to the train station, sidewalks that are there.
Yeah.
And everything was a lot cheaper back then, but.
Yeah, because.
We can get a grant.
Yeah, the, there's an account that the plant, through the planning board, for Main Street sidewalk improvements, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So I thought, well, maybe we can use that money. Put that money towards it to revise the plans. You know, I'm like, a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. I mean, I figured it was not gonna be twenty-seven thousand five, I'm twenty-seven five to revise the plans because of wages and so forth, but I wasn't expecting a hundred nine because I'm like, wait a minute, this is a revision of plans. I'm not asking you to start from scratch, you know?
Honestly, wouldn't you almost have to start from scratch because the DOT specifications for sidewalks and roads would change a lot?
Well, the thing is, not. Yes, it's one of those, yes and no. It's one of those, I'm not sure a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars worth of work is there. That's all I'm saying. You know, for someone who's done it, it's just like, yeah, I'm not sure there's a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars worth of work.
There's money, money should be still there for funding for the upgrade on, on the plan.
Yeah, there's twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in the account, and I was hoping to utilize that towards revising these plans.
That's what it was there for.
Right, exactly. So it's like, okay, if this can't be used this way, then we'll go after grant monies and then try and combine the two. If we can get grant monies and the twenty-seven five to move that forward.
Yeah, the only thing that came up for a question when I talked to him recently was the, is it gonna be required? They have sidewalks on both sides now. Are they gonna require sidewalks on both sides on twenty-seven?
Well, the whole thing is, there's some places where you can't get sidewalks on both sides, you know? So you may have one side or one side and the other with crosswalks. So that's all I have tonight.
That's well, yeah, you're chilling. Any board members have anything for good of the order?
Motion in the yard?
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta vote on our, we gotta hold on, we gotta vote on our next, next scheduled meeting days. Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do you want to have it again here, Tony?
I will, well, I know that they're supposed to.
With a fan?
Well, right now, I think that room's occupied, but we'll take a look, so it's either gonna be here or downstairs. Because we'll try to make it downstairs because there's more room, it's a bigger room.
Got it. Motion being by Mr. Kement to hold the meeting on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benignato. Any discussion in regards to that meeting, or that motion, sorry? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
That's at six thirty, right?
Yes.
Motion to, you wanna have, now you wanna say it? You don't wanna say motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
Motion put on the table to adjourn? Seconded by Mr. Benignato. All those in favor, signify. Any discussion in regards to that motion? For the record, Kim, for the record, we had three visitors that were in the meeting room that did not sign it.
I did, I understand.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is eight P M. We are adjourned.